Lee here, I'm not seeing on my screen, I'm not seeing Lee.
He may have seen his shadow.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll wait a moment for Commissioner Lumsire and then we'll go ahead and get started. And you don't need to look at my sweater. All right. We're all here. Bring our board meeting. To open, call to order. Before we get started, just want to let you know that Randy and I had a conversation last week about roll call. And what I think we're going to do is I'll go ahead and just start for the first part with our approving the agenda and the consent agenda and then Randy will go ahead and be the one taking the role to kind of make sure we're all rotating as we go through as he would if we were here together. So Randy, again, I really appreciate your being willing to do that. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are here. Let's go ahead and all say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public access forum, Mike, I don't believe we had anybody. Is there anyone?
That's correct, Madam Chair, we didn't have anybody.
Okay. Just for the public who may be watching, anyone wishing to address the board on issues not found on today's agenda typically may do so in person during the peacetime emergency. Those wishing to address the board on issues not found on the agenda may send a written correspondence to the county administrator, Mike Williams. In lieu of being heard in person, the board will be presented with the written request. Board members will not engage in dialogue about the issue, but rather refer the matter to the appropriate county department with the expectation that a report will follow. A citizen may be heard at the public access forum only once per month. Okay, approving the agenda, is there any changes? I know there's one update that I am aware of. And that will be G1 under a public hearing with regard to in a public hearing under environmental services. This is with our ordinance amendments. Shelley has said because the committee has gotten on a few issues, including rural tourism, accessory dwellings, et cetera. We'll talk about it at that point, but it will be on more topics than one, so that's a heads up. Is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing the, sorry Steve.
Did they include the addition of the person to the board or not for consent?
Oh. That was emailed out. That was emailed out, but we
Okay, so that will be part of the consent agenda or is that? Is that, okay, so let's approve the overall agenda. And then when we go to the consent agenda, Steve, if you want to say the name of the person out loud, just so everybody is remembering, that would be, if I can order. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, we'll just go straight down the list on this one. District one, aye. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four. Lee, are you there? District five. Okay, so Randy, when Lee comes back, could he in that, or we just move on?
I think we can move on and
Okay, all right, consent agenda. Are there any items for further consideration or can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, is this where we want to add? Amy Scherping of the district five.
Can you say the name again, I think we had some fun.
Okay, Amy Scherping.
Okay, great. Excellent, so are you moving the agenda, including that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Persky, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote, district one, aye. District two.
Aye.
I saw an aye. Couldn't hear you, Joe, you're muted. Yeah, all right, he's now he disappeared, Randy, he nodded aye. District three. Okay, Commissioner Mergen?
Aye.
District four. Okay, district five. All right. So for the rest of our motions, Randy will help us with going through the roll call. All right, we have three public hearings today. The first of which Shelley, Angie, I'm not sure who else is going to be on here, the first is the USS Great River Solar and Meadow Brook Dairy Farm. This is a rezoning request.
Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I do have Angie Burke here to go through the agenda item as well as Jennifer Buckington.
Right, thank you both.
Good morning, Commissioners, can you? Okay, Angie Burke. Services. The item, your first public hearing today is to consider a rezoning. Either approve or deny a request submitted by USS Great Solar LLC of Minneapolis on behalf of Meadow Brook Dairy Farm of Sartell. This rezoning would rezone approximately eight and a half acres from the R10 zoning district to the agricultural 40 zoning district. The Stearns County Planning Commission did hear this request and their recommendation on a six to one vote was to recommend denial. The findings of fact are listed on packet page sixty-three and sixty-four of your packet. All the parties were notified in addition to Brockway Township who does the request. Environmental Services has not received any written correspondence and the only people online today to speak to this request are the applicants. That's all I have for right now.
Carol, I think you're muted. Is that two, can you hear me?
There. Yeah, now we can.
It was at a hundred, which is why Joe could hear me in Sartell, so I was trying to get it turned down. Okay, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Will you walk us through who's, who is, who goes first?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Michelle Sims on behalf of USS Great River Solar LLC. I can go ahead and provide a few remarks. Thank you all for your time today.
Proceed.
So, yes, just for some context here, so USS Great River Solar LLC has mentioned, we're requesting to rezone about eight and a half acres of land. On this one hundred and sixty acre parcel from residential ten to a agricultural forty. This request received a recommendation of approval from the township and denial from the planning commission. In twenty seventeen, fifteen acres were rezoned on this same parcel, also from our ten to a forty, based on the same ordinance on this same parcel here. One megawatt solar garden was permitted through the conditional use permit process on this parcel. So the rezoning application, CUP, were approved, we built the project with no concerns from neighbors of the surrounding community. And just to touch on a few things here, so the landowners here own Meadow Brook Dairy. This is a hundred and sixty acre parcel, it's formed with, or farmed with a center pivot. And all of the neighbors know that this is an agricultural use, there's been no concerns whatsoever presented about the rezoning here. We're simply trying to rezone an additional portion to agriculture. So strictly from a rezoning perspective, there's really nothing to dispute that this is an agricultural property. And we're not proposing island zoning because an existing part of the parcel is already zoned as agricultural and the township did recommend approval. So if our rezoning application is approved, we do intend to apply for a conditional use permit process for community solar garden, which would require going through the planning commission and county board as well. And with that in mind, I wanted to comment on just a few findings of fact from the planning commission hearing. First of all, the, the planning commission was split on whether there were environmental concerns to be addressed if the rezoning was approved. There are no environmental concerns whatsoever that would occur if this rezoning was approved. And if we're getting ahead of ourselves a bit here and they are referring to the environmental concerns of solar, there are no environmental concerns in that as well. We use no hazardous materials in any of our equipment. The panels will go to a reputable recycling program after decommissioning. And additionally, the solar garden, if approved through the conditional use permit process and rezoning is approved today. It would be vegetated with pollinator friendly native habitat, this decreases stormwater runoff by twenty-three percent, improves soil quality, restores crop land and actually increases crop yields for crops that benefit from pollination like soybeans. And all these benefits will give back to the county for generations. The solar garden would provide habitat for songbirds, game birds and pollinators. And numerous Stearns County constituents are eligible for a direct financial benefit from the project through a solar subscription. So if there are concerns about the environmental impact, solar provides a huge number of benefits and I don't see any fallbacks that we haven't addressed. So additionally, there was no info provided regarding the impact to property values as outlined in the findings of fact. And just to touch on that, no impact to surrounding property values will occur through this rezoning request. And again, if we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here and looking at potential solar garden impact, a multitude of studies have shown from reputable study organizations that there is no impact from a solar garden on surrounding property values. So in conclusion, this rezoning impact, or this rezoning application does not impact the surrounding neighbors. It aligns with the future land use category of concentrated development. This land can be cultivated through the intended use for the project's term and then can be prepared or expanded in accordance with county ordinance requirements at that time. And further, this used request, or this rezoning request maintains the county's rural character and natural resources while still allowing for orderly and sustainable development. So with that, we would respectfully request that the Stearns County Board of Commissioners approve our application to rezone eight point four nine acres of this property from residential ten to agricultural forty. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, and then just to clarify before we go to the, the owners, today what is in front of us is the, the change from residential to a forty. Correct? Yep. And not any decision we might make does not decay what would be decided with a solar project move forward. Correct, okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sims.
Madam Chair, this is Angie Burke and I don't believe the applicant, John Uterman, is on the line. And so we do have a letter received from John. I can, we can, we can read that into the record, paraphrase that into the record at this time if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay, so again, this is from John Uterman, he is the property owner, indicates that he, he and his wife have farmed the parcel for many years. They have the one operational solar garden, now they're trying to rezone the second. He originally wanted to do ten megawatt project, but the law at the time would not allow that. They do intend to continue farming the remainder of the parcel for the coming generations and hope to pass it down to their family. And that the vast majority of the property is used for farming. He goes on to say that the benefits of solar bring to our land, they haven't had issues with neighbors related to the solar. He references that he's been told that some county departments are concerned, they're trying to bypass county solar requirements. And he indicates he wouldn't know how to do that if he had tried. Rezoning part of the land to agriculture is in tune with the use of the land and their future generations. That is all we have from the applicant and unless USS Solar has anything else to add, that would conclude your public hearing.
Okay, you asked, Ms. Sims, did you have anything else to add? Not, not asking you to add anything else, only in case. So I believe, I need to ask if there's anybody else who wants to testify to weigh in? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at our public hearing? Their time, is there anyone else? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Okay, is there a motion on this?
Could I ask some questions?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I mean, I'm just trying to get us kind of back to Robert's rules and getting a motion and a second and then we can ask our questions if that's okay, just to help us move forward. Otherwise, people are really uncertain, certainly do that.
Okay, Commissioner Persky, then I'll move to accept the findings of fact by the planning commission and request the denial.
Is there a second on, on denying the, the change? Jeff, I see why you wanted to ask questions first. Where we got here on public hearings, right? Okay, there's a motion, a second discussion.
I wanted to ask of the presenter there. Are her panel, do those panels have cadmium in them?
Madam Chair, this is
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I believe there's no cadmium in the panels, there's no hazardous materials whatsoever and we could eventually down the road, if this does get approved and we move to the conditional use permit process, that could be added as a condition.
Madam Chair, this is
What about Les?
Also representing the applicant, Great River. I just wanted to chime in quickly to state that, well, there is absolutely no cadmium in the rezoning of land from residential to agricultural. There's also cadmium in these solar panels that we would be using after we would submit a conditional use permit application, but that's not what's being discussed right now. Again, as, as Michelle stated, if anyone is concerned about environmental condition and status of Stearns County generally, this specific piece of property, then they would be in favor of, of having solar on this property. The more land that goes into solar from row crop agriculture, the less runoff you'll have, the better your water quality will be. The more you'll give soil a chance to regenerate after years of production, the fewer hazardous materials will be used on the property such as chemicals that are often used in row crop agriculture. So all in all, this makes, if, if we want to skip ahead and start talking about solar, its impact on the environment is nothing but positive and that has been studied extensively.
So a question I actually have since today, the only thing that's in front of us, it is not solar that is in front of us, is moving from residential to a forty. We should be asking questions that relate from going residential to a forty only. And I think this happened with the planning commission too, getting ahead of ourselves, whether the board would approve or not approve. Solar panels is not what is in front of us today, all that's in front of us today is about the use. Steve, do you have a comment or a question?
Well, that was gonna be my comment, we're talking about rezoning. The solar discussion comes at a later time if we get to that point. In my opinion, if you've driven out that way, rezoning, that should not be an issue. I mean, the property owner could come back and request to rezone the whole hundred and sixty and I don't think there'd be any reason to deny that. Just as I don't see any reason to deny this because there is multiple, it's not, in my opinion, it's spot zoning. And, you know, the comment at planning commission about how the irrigator runs, I think that's also a decision the farmer can make on his own. Obviously, he knows how to work his center pivot. So, you know, I, I know that's my opinion.
Madam Chair, in fact, that's a good point that we didn't really address in our prepared remarks, so I'll just say that we and the Uterman family have worked directly with Grand Irrigation, that's a, a center pivot contractor, to redirect basically the tailpiece in that part of the program. So he is able to continue using the center pivot and for that to be productive on the remainder of his farmland. This essentially just gives him some sort of a baseline, you know, foundation where if crop prices are volatile, which typically they are, even in a bad year, he's going to have enough income where he doesn't have to worry about, do I have to sell this land, do I have to take this land out of farming, do I have to, you know, no longer have this in my family? That's not an issue if he's got this sort of baseline level of income. So he sees it as a, a component of his agricultural business because it's, it's what supports that, his ability to continue farming. But yeah, if anyone's driven past it, I mean, we're talking about a hundred fifty acre farm field with a huge center pivot on it, I mean, there's nothing residential about it. And as the commissioner before me stated, it would not be island zoning because directly adjacent to the piece in question, it's already zoned agricultural. So we're just looking to expand that boundary, the agricultural, by about seven or eight acres of a one hundred fifty acre farm field.
And the, the township supported this, was there anything that we should be noting within that supported approving the request, the zoning change?
There, there weren't any conditions proposed, but they did support it unanimously, so every single member of the township board considered that and, and said, yes, we, we think this is good, let's go forward, because they know the land.
Members, any other questions?
Commissioner Persky, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, Joe, and then Jeff.
First of all, let me tell you, the, the Utermans are a reputable family, they've, they've been in here for generations, they do a nice job farming. They've got a good reputation in the, in the communities and their intentions are very good. But Ms. Sims and Colin, I, I want to know, a, a couple of questions here I have, is they actually wanted to put the entire piece in, solar and
Joe, just a second, we're only talking today about the zoning request, not about solar. And that's what's, I, I know they're here, so that's fine to talk about, but we just have to remember we're not voting on solar today.
Yeah, but we're here because the, the company had, has changed their mind as far as putting in the entire piece opposed to putting in single pieces. And so we would be rezoning the whole piece otherwise and I, and we would have no trouble with that. Also with the center pivot, the Utermans had requested to put the single, the solar panel to the outside where the, the irrigator does not reach, so why could we not be rezoning that piece instead of the whole piece that we're looking at now?
Because that's not what's in front of us, we've got a request in front of us.
Good. My, my point is that
I'm sorry, Joe, I'm not trying to argue with you, it's just sometimes we get off in other places, we only have the request that's in front of us today.
Okay.
Are you wanting them to go, to go further than that, is that what you're saying?
I wanted to get some information why we're rezoning this piece instead of the piece that the Utermans had requested initially.
Madam Chair, can I weigh in here?
Yes, and then, and then Commissioner Mergen, I haven't forgotten you, I promise.
Okay, so the Utermans' letter refers to a ten megawatt project. The Utermans had interest in, in taking basically half of the field and converting that into a large solar project. We would be interested in that as well. Currently, there's not a viable program to do that with, so there's no way for us to do a ten megawatt project today. It would require a change to the law. So if in the future, there was a change to the law and it enabled a ten megawatt program, then we could sign a lease with the Utermans' family and we could submit a new rezoning application. And then we could submit a use permit application and a building permit application. So all of that could theoretically happen, just like it could happen on any parcel in the whole county in the future. But currently, there's no path for that, we don't have any paperwork for that, we can't do a ten megawatt project. So instead, what we are allowed to do is a second one megawatt project, which still affords the landowner, you know, what they were interested in, which is sort of a baseline level of income so that they can continue farming the rest of the parcel. So that's why we're not requesting a rezoning application of greater than the amount of land we need, because there's no path to do a project larger than this at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen.
I have a couple of issues. First of all, if all we're supposed to be talking about is rezoning this, then why are the only people here, and we're not supposed to be talking about solar, then why are the only people here testifying are from the solar companies? So I have an issue with that. And then the second thing is I, I would like to have Joe do an overview of what the discussion was at the planning commission.
So Commissioner Mergen, my understanding is that the planning commission also talked about the solar and obviously, as we all know, anybody can testify or present at one of these public hearings that wants to. It seemed like the same challenge happened at the last one, there is a two-step process here. And so we're not doing the solar part today. So I, I think we can have Commissioner Persky do that, I'd like to have Angie or anybody else from staff who wants to help us with sorting through this. Because I have to admit, one of the things that's been a little confusing to me is why it's a one-step process, why it's a two-step process if we're going to get ahead of ourselves. The other challenge I see when we're talking about these things is we really can't consider other potential possibility, future possibilities, because all we have in front, I'm going to sound like a lawyer now, all we have in front of us is this particular application. Angie, Joe. Planning Commission, Commissioner Mergen asked about the planning commission discussion.
Correct. And that relates again to, to some of the questions I was alluding to earlier. And we don't quite, quite have the full story about what the landowner intends to do and what the solar company would like to do. And there seems to be a, a question about what happens to the property after we rezoned and, and what we're rezoning. The, the planning commission had no trouble of using it for agriculture if it was going to be used for agriculture, but we seem to have a conflict whether we think solar is actually agriculture or whether it's a commercial use. But I have a question for Colin, in that he had said that this is the second field that they're putting on. And it was our understanding that the, the present programs were limiting one megawatt field on a property. And, and therefore you could not put a second one on. Colin, can you respond to that, you know, we're, we're a little bit confused about that.
Yeah, this is David Watts at US Solar, I'm not sure why my name is showing as my, my colleague.
Okay, sorry, sorry, David.
I must have signed in from his invite link, sorry about the confusion. So the first thing is that there's actually no ambiguity about what's going on here or what's being proposed. What's being proposed is again, a rezoning application from R10 to A40 of about eight acres. And the purpose, what's to follow, is that we would submit a conditional use permit application for a one megawatt community solar garden, which would interconnect to the same existing distribution line on the east side of the parcel on, on Great River Road there. So there's not any ambiguity, that's what's, that's what the plan is, it's dependent on a rezoning application because the Stearns County ordinance says that solar is a permitted use through a CUP on agric, on agriculturally zoned land. So this parcel, which is in a residential, well, part of, part of this parcel is in a residential zoning classification. So if we want to develop a one megawatt community solar garden So if we want to develop a one megawatt community solar garden on that portion of the parcel, which has not already been rezoned to agriculture, we need to submit an additional rezoning application. After that is passed, then we would again be proposing a use that is permitted on that new agricultural zoning classification. Um, because that's just the way that your ordinance is structured. If, if your ordinance was structured to allow community solar on R10, then we wouldn't be having this discussion. And we would just be submitting a conditional use permit application. And at this point, um, I think the rezoning is clear. If not, we won't have issues that we need to mitigate. Get to the conditional use permit process. But, uh, the rezoning request, if, if you just analyze the criteria that, that is supposed to be considered for a rezoning application is pretty clear that we do satisfy all of that, including not being island zoning. I'm not sure. I feel like I missed one of your questions, Commissioner.
So if we, if we approve, just real quickly, if, just to clarify, if we approve the change from residential to ag, then it will be agricultural land. And if the solar permit, intended solar permit was denied, this land would be held. And I, it's too bad Mr. Uterman isn't on here. It would continue to be agricultural. It would then be agricultural as it was intended to be farming them. Okay.
I'm sure that that's correct.
Yeah, his use of that.
So what we're talking about today is it's either residential or agricultural. If we approve it, it is not motion in front of us, but if we approve it, then the next step would be them applying for a conditional use permit. And if that is approved, there'd be solar panels. And if that was denied, we would be farming it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, I have a question for David.
Just really quick, I, I want to see if Lee has anything, Joe, just because he's been quiet. Commissioner Latsmore, did you?
No, uh, two of you spoke at once, so I don't know. I didn't know, uh, my opinion was being solicited.
Your opinion's being solicited.
Ah, okay. Well, let's let these cats hash it out and, uh, uh, declare a victor, uh, once we've got this done. But yeah, you're doing it right. You're, you're doing it right, Cheryl. You're handling this, uh, this is a two-step process. And, uh, I, to remind us that that's how it is, uh, was beneficial, but good job.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Persky, did you add anything that wasn't specific that's related to residential or agricultural?
Yeah, well, I, I, with David, uh, I, I, I had asked a question about the, is this an additional, uh, solar garden that they're intending to put there? If they, if they own the present one, it, it does, is that go beyond the one megawatt then? Because they'll have two one megawatts by the same company on the property. Is that correct?
So the, yeah, so the first, um, uh, community solar garden on this property is a one megawatt and was developed by US Solar. So this is a second one megawatt project. And this is something that's actually, um, governed by not only the state law, but also the Public Utilities Commission and also the Department of Commerce to establish the rules about, you know, how many can you have on a given parcel, et cetera. And the rules are any one developer can do one megawatt per parcel. Unless the previous project has already reached commercial operation before the subsequent project even submits its application to XL. The reason is they want to make sure that we're not trying to just circumvent the rules by doing, you know, 10 different one megawatt projects all at once and constructing and developing them together and kind of getting around their, their rule for they want them to be separate individual projects. So that's the, that's the line in the sand that the Department of Commerce has drawn is if the previous project's already operational, then you can submit an application for a brand new project. And so that's what we've done here. And if you apply that same rule forward, it means that we would not be able to, no one, or I guess US Solar would not be able to submit a third one megawatt community solar garden request, at least until the, this project that we're talking about right now is fully permitted, engineered, financed, constructed, commissioned and, uh, actively like complete. And then you could submit the new application. So we're talking about, as, if, if we went as fast as possible and if we did intend to in fact do a third megawatt here, the soonest you could see another project in the ground would be maybe four years from now. And then you would still have an opportunity to review the application and approve or deny it.
Okay, thank you. And I think that was very informative. That's not what the issue is in front of us, unfortunately. We're not voting on that. We shouldn't even be discussing that right now. Is there any more questions that relate to the, the, the motion in front of us, which is to deny rezoning from residential to A40? And again, what I'm hearing is the intent of the landowner, should we approve, which that means this motion would have to fail, is he coming in front of us? Yes, with the solar app, but otherwise he would be farming it. So that's what's in front of us right now. Both are permitted under our ordinances. Okay. I think, as Lee might say, this course might be done. Um, we do have a motion in front of us. The motion, uh, Randy, are you available?
I am, yes. The motion is to concur with the planning commission and deny the request.
To resign.
Yep, and I can take the roll call. We're going to start with District Two, Joe.
Hi.
District Three.
Nay.
District Four. Lee.
Ah, what? I gotta find my nay button.
Nay, okay. District Five.
Nay.
District One.
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails, four to one.
Okay, is there a, a motion, a different motion? Is there a motion to approve the rezoning request?
Madam Chair, I'll move the zoning, uh, to approve the zone rezoning request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Notch, is there a second?
I will second, um, and just to reiterate, we're only voting on rezoning.
Correct. Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Given our previous conversation, unless somebody has anything else on rezoning, I think we should move to taking that vote. Randy?
Okay, District Three.
Hi.
District Four.
I'm, am I on?
District, yep, thank you, Lee. District Five.
Hi.
District One.
Hi.
District Two.
Nay.
It passes four to one.
Okay, thank you, members. I know that these issues are a little complicated since we've got this two-step thing instead of a one-step thing going on. So appreciate it.
Um, Cheryl, I have a question before we go on to the next item.
Yes.
And Shelley, if you can help us out here, if these are public hearings, should we not be opening the public hearing? Take testimony and then closing the public hearing?
I did.
Okay.
I did. I did the three asking three times.
Okay. Then we need to close it too, once you're done with public testimony, right?
I did.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's okay.
Madam Chair, we can move on to the next, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is, um, E1, which is a public hearing for James and Robin Henshams for consideration of an interim use permit. And we do have staff here to go through that as well as parties here for testifying.
Okay, that sounds, um, why don't we have the staff give us the background information and then we'll open the public hearing? Um, I do have, um, several names on here and hopefully Angie or Shelley will help us through, navigate through that. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. I'll go through a brief summary and then I will help go through the public hearing for who we all have on the call today. This item was also considered by the planning commission on December 17th. And this is an application for interim use permit submitted by James and Robin Henshams of Avon. And this would be to allow a vacation private home rental in the R1 zoning district. The property is located at 19357 Red Oak Circle, Avon. The planning commission's recommendation was to approve the interim use permit and the vote was five to two. The proposed conditions are listed on packet page 99 and 100. And Madam Chair, we do have a number of callers on the line today, including the applicant and the members of the public. And we also do have a summary of the public, the written public testimony. So I would recommend that you consider taking the callers first. And if they address the issues in their letter, then we won't read the letter into the record as well in the interest of time.
Okay, that makes sense. Let's go ahead and start with, uh, the Henshams, with the applicant.
Hello.
Hello?
Hi, Robin Henshams.
Jim Henshams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Where, how would you like us to start? What?
So usually how this works, are there particularly things you want to make sure that we know? I, there will be other people from the public, um, who are going to have comments about this. You'll certainly have an opportunity if there are questions that, that arise as well.
Well, we, we did write a letter.
Just a quick second, just to make sure, because Randy, I think I just realized, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is open, okay. Henshams.
Okay.
Okay, we did write a letter that we sent out. So if that, if we just want to start with that and let the other people speak and then maybe we can follow up and answer any unanswered questions, would that be all right?
That's fine. That's fine. Okay, who, who, um, you, us through? Do you want me to be calling on it? Looks like the Lucians are on. And, um, I don't know.
Madam Chair, uh, this is Angie Berg. I can sure help cue them on if you would like.
Thank you, please.
Okay, so our first speaker is Mike Peternow. Mike, you're on the line, go ahead.
Mr. Peternow?
Okay, Madam Chair, he did indicate he's been speaking, although I don't see him on the line. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
The next caller is Ellen Lucianz. Ellen, if you're on the line, go ahead.
Emily Lucianz, is that?
Yes, go with Emily.
Okay, um, so, uh, I have my letter that I did send in too, but just a few additional things. So I, um, I honestly wish that I knew what we could say or what information we could provide to show the gravity of what this is, this situation has done to us as individuals and as a neighborhood. Not only has it brought us great stress, it has also brought us closer in reali- realizing what a great neighborhood we have and how important it is to all of us to keep it the way we currently have it. I have seen emotional and physical symptoms due to stress occurring during this, during this wonderful, the wonderful neighbors that I have. As a provider in healthcare, I cannot express how much this has and will continue to impact us simply having to go through this process. I cannot imagine this is consistent with the goal and plans that the county has set when it comes to rental properties. I also noted that in my letter submitted, I had questioned the process for filing complaints. During the planning commission meeting, they only really discussed directing complaints to the homeowner or the, um, police officers. After I emailed with Jennifer, she reported that in regard to complaints, there are issues, if there are issues with a vacation rental, calls should be made to our office. If it's outside of office hours, made to the sheriff's department. Um, the sheriff's department notifies them of complaints or calls they receive that are zoning related. When I asked are all neighbors surrounding a rental property notified about the process or only if asked? Um, if it's a well-known process or if this is a chance, uh, that many complaints do not make it because the neighbors and people are unaware. She's stated generally people are aware if they have issues with something like this, they should call the county. But, um, there isn't a specific way to notify neighbors about the complaint process. Um, and it's oftentimes brought up during public hearings. But I don't know, you know, we can assume that, that generally we know this, but I know between our neighborhood group, none of us knew that this was a process. And it didn't seem consistent with the process that the planning commission mentioned. So ultimately wondering, is the process been in place? Really can we show that that's only had one complaint with previous rentals? And if anything, if there can be a better process, um, uh, process that could be done so that people are aware of how to get their concerns heard back? And that's all I have.
Okay, is there anything particular about this, this request that's in front of us? I, what you just brought up is, is a, a good and important question. And it's something that I'm sure staff will get back to us about as well. But in terms of this particular request that's in front of us, are there concerns that you have that you wanted to raise?
Um, I guess the biggest concern is when we, oh, sorry, that was largely, um, what I felt with the planning commission, why it was approved is because there weren't any complaints. They said that there's only been one complaint with rental properties. Um, and they didn't feel like it was a big deal and they were going to pass it and have it go through. Um, and so looking back at that, when it felt like such a strong reason of why they felt it would pass, is it really, is there really a process in place? Is this really, can we really use that as a primary reason?
And it, okay, understanding that, are there any particular concerns about this particular request? Because yes, in general, if there's a noise violation or something else, it's the sheriff's department. I mean, there are particular ways that people have concerns. And for this particular request that's in front, have you gotten, I'm guessing you've gotten a chance to look at the application?
Um, yes, yep. So in, I guess not anything particular right at this moment. It's just moving forward is how we, how we address. If it goes through, what does that look like?
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next caller is Steve Lucianz. If he's on the line, go ahead, Steve.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go, go ahead.
All right, so, uh, as I was to say, my name is Steven Lucianz. I'm, I am a resident on Red Oak Circle. And I guess a specific issue that I have with this particular application is the fact that the Henshams are using this property not as their primary residence, but as, in my opinion, an income property. And an income property, not in the sense that it's going to be a long-term rental, but a short-term rental property. So Airbnb and BBRO and all these organizations started out and were originally designed for the average person to supplement their income on their primary residence that for rooms that they had just laying around or, or their whole home if they were going to go away on a weekend. This property that they have is their second property. And, and really, they're not going to be coming and going Monday through Friday from this residence. They have a, uh, their primary residence that they currently rent out, which is in line with what BBRO and Airbnb was meant for. So this, this application, this request is essentially commercializing a residential neighborhood. It would be as though, in, in my opinion, uh, setting up a motel on Red Oak Circle. Um, they, it's, it's not in line with what the companies were originally founded on. And it's not in line with a residential neighborhood. And, and it really, it just, it moves away from that idea of a private home rental and more of a, I mean, theoretically, they could rent it out to 365 different people throughout the year. And, and I, I have a major issue with that. And, and I have a major issue with that. It, this does not fit in a residential neighborhood, the way that they're designing it for. Now, if they were to sell their current residence and move to Red Oak Circle and live there as their primary residence, it might be a different story. I don't know, but that's not what they're looking to do. They're looking to turn this into a short-term rental income property for the foreseeable future for upwards of 30 years. You know, they, they, they originally submitted a 30-year request, and yes, they magically want to retire in three to five years? I mean, this stuff is not adding up, you know? And I just have an issue. I'm, I'm all for people doing what they want on their own property. But this is, this isn't in line with a residential picture of, of Red Oak Circle. And, and I guess the second point that I wanted to make is this, I just wanted to voice my frustration with, with having an entire neighborhood minus the Hentges being in strong opposition to this motion, and yet we have to lose sleep and take time off of work to, to, to make everybody see that we, as a neighborhood, do not want this. And I, and I really hope, and I, and I, and I, you know, speaking for myself and the neighborhood as well, you know, I really hope that you, as a board, can see that, that we, as a neighborhood, do not want this. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Luchens.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the line?
Madam Chair, this is Angie Berg. So we would like to call on Mike Peternell once again. We believe he might be on the call.
Okay. Mr. Peternell, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for making the time. You can go ahead and see with your comments. You can take a few minutes. Thank you so much.
I guess, other than, I'll let you read my letter. I just wanted to point out, I use the term variance rather than interim use permit in my letter, which is my mistake. It seems like the same, same groceries in a different bag, but that was my mistake. But otherwise, I'll, and, and what Mr. Luchens said is in total agree, I'm in total agreement with that. But otherwise, you can just read my letter when you get to it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Berg, is there anyone else?
Madam, Madam Chair, let's call one last time on Vincent Dolan, please. We, we're not sure he's on the line, but we'd like to check, please.
Excellent. Dolan, are you with us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Excellent.
My time.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, very quickly, I have some similar issues with the interim use permit. For me, I think the, the items that stand out the most are possible increased noise, increased traffic, and reduced property values. And that's really the three things that I think are most important to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Ms. Berg, would it be appropriate that Hentges? No? Okay. Jim and Robin, do you have comments you want to make?
Yes. Yeah. We would like to address, and Jim Hentges, by the way, would like to address some of these, some of these issues that our neighbors are concerning. But, you know, we purchased this property as a second home, not as a primary residence. We may never live there as long as some of the residents in that neighborhood already have lived there. This will be sometime a retirement home for us, but even in retirement, we may not live there full-time. And as purchaser of residential property, as owners, we have rights. We have the right to rent out our house if we choose to do that for long-term, 30 days or more. And that's what our intent is. But the discussion today is to ask if we can rent it less than 30 days. You know, the, the county has approved us to do out of our home where we have people stay right with us in another 25 or so properties in the county that have been approved with, from what we understand, on the Planning Commission meeting, that there's only been one complaint. You know, there's, our neighbors are concerned about different people who'll be using our home, whether we own it or our kids come to visit and use it, or their friends or our friends, or even people from our church. They're all going to be different people. And so it's not going to be any different than if we had people from vacation rental or Airbnb rent. And another concern they had was that there'd be additional noise, garbage. I guess, you know, I guess if I could go down the list, they thought it would be loud, drunk people, drug-using, fast-driving, and child-endangering people. And do they really think that's who we'd rent out to in a place that we are fixing up? That's not what we would do. Reading all the letters also, there's one word that kept coming up on almost every letter is different people. And that kind of leads us to wonder, what do they mean by different people? Is this more of a discrimination issue? They're concerned about people unlike them moving into that area or visiting in that area? And what we found in our home is we do have different people come to visit, and they are exceptional people. In three years, we have not had one issue with people living or staying in the same houses, not in adjoining property. Robin?
So when, when we came to the neighborhood, we really didn't realize that this was going to be like a personality or a, we didn't realize that all these people that have been here have either been from the original landowners down like 20-plus years, all of them. And we also didn't realize that part of the process is that we really should have gone around to each neighbor and said, hi, we're Jim and Robin. I mean, like, we would, if that would have been something that we thought was the right thing to do. In this time, I really don't know if it was the right thing. But we did not do that. However, in the first couple of weeks after being there, I did have the opportunity to meet five total. One was because we wanted him to possibly do some heating in the house and we, that we were going to be changing. Three were just because of my dog ran around and I got to visit with them, and they were all nice people. They all seemed nice enough. And the, the contractor, we did, he said in his letter that we never mentioned to him that it was going to be a rental, and that's not true. We've been upfront since the very beginning. We knew this was never going to be our primary residence, and we wanted to be able to rent it. And we will rent it 30 days or more. We just like the opportunity to do it like a week here, a week there, so that we and our kids and our kids' friends can enjoy it as well. But I think that's a two-way street, too. You know, this neighborhood, this long, you know, tight-knit neighborhood, we talked to a couple of the past owners when, one of the letters we see where it said that they opened the past owners before us with open arms, and the word we got was clicky. So that's not maybe the feeling, you know, that, that the other owners that have been in our property tell. One of the other owners that I got a chance to talk to is our right next-door neighbor for a long period of time, and she was hilarious and funny and spunky, and I really enjoyed her. She had driven across the property and said, oh, I better come talk to you as long as I'm driving on your property. So then we had the opportunity to walk over right away, like within, you know, we talked actually for well over an hour. But we had the opportunity for her to say, see where this, this yard pin is? And it is only 11 feet outside their window. You know, we didn't put that line there. We purchased a property that's 2.2 acres, and it's large enough that hopefully nobody's going to hear us, our people, our guests, whatever. But I understand that, that, you know, the daughter wrote a letter that said that it might be awkward. Well, I think that what they're accustomed to is she, she mentioned a few things right away, that there was a garden that they'd planted things in, that she tended. And I said, well, no, that's okay. I mean, I'm okay with that. I don't, no need to, like, take ownership of that garden. And then we continued with our sideline down, and she said that fire pit, we've shared that with the neighbors. We do fires together all the time. And I'm like, okay, you know, doesn't mean that can be the only fire pit. And if, you know, if that's a concern to them, maybe they can move that to their side and would put one way over where a fire pit's not going to bother them. I think we can change things up so that it's not awkward. And then she looked out to the lake, and we were looking at the dock, and our property came with a gorgeous dock that goes all the way to the end of the reeds. There's really, you know, the beach that's talked about, it's not a beach I would sit with my four-year-old grandson. It's not like that kind of a beach at all. There's rocks and stuff there, but I would take him out to the end of the dock. So I don't see how awkward that is compared to any other, now, this is 200 feet that we've got. I don't know how awkward that would be anymore to anybody who's got a 50-foot and a 50-foot and that, right? And she said, you know, we always shared that dock with our neighbor because ours is in disrepair, which it is. So would that be awkward? Sure. But not for us necessarily or for our guests. You know, so maybe it's just looking at how things have been done in the past, and there's people not wanting to change. But we're not going to be full-time neighbors. We are planning on renting it, and it, either it'll be 30 days or more, or if we get this interim use permit, then hopefully we can do, you know, a week here and a week there, and we have no intention of doing it every week.
Yeah, and I think with, with what we found in our home and other vacation rental owners, you don't rent out all the time. And you have a choice of when you want to rent it out. And that's what we're looking for, is to be able to use the property when we want to and allow other people to use it when we don't have a need to. And gentlemen earlier stated what vacation rental was founded on and their principles. You know, we've been doing this for three years, and I know it's been around longer than that, but I've never once heard anybody talk about that. So I, I guess, you know, the, the Planning Commission did talk over the issues. They had a letter from the township that suggested that we start, we asked for 25 or 30 years. That's because we didn't want to go through this again. Heck, 30 years, I'm going to be gone, God. So it's just that we didn't want to have to go through this process every year, every five years. We just wanted to be done with it one time. There is an annual license or a permit that we have to get, so if there is issues, you can hold a license. And we can't do it for short, short-term again, but not for long-term.
Well, and we really do believe that if these, I know the neighbors are all worked up about it, and, and I feel bad about that. But, you know, we're worked up too. He's talking about no sleep. I don't think that's the issue. I mean, we've been in the same boat that they have. But I do think that, you know, given what the, the Planning Commission said for five years, even though that was much less than we wanted, I think that would be an amount of time that we could prove that it really isn't an issue. And if it is an issue, then we don't want to do it. I mean, we're not that kind of people. So if it's not working, it's not working, but we can't see why it wouldn't. I actually took that list that was sent out during the last meeting, and there was 25 properties on it. A few of them were resorts, I took those off. I took off the smallest, which was like a .14, and I took off the biggest, which was like an 80-acre, and then I averaged the rest. And the average of all of those properties was less than half the size of the property that we're talking about. And there's been one complaint. So I just, I don't know why, as reasonable people, we can't make this work. And hopefully our neighbors, it's not going to be any different than if we were there or if our kids are there, our kids' friends, like Jim said, or...
Thank you. Thank you so much. There, I, I hope you two could stand online. There may be questions from board members. Is there anybody who hasn't already spoken, who is on the, the line, who wishes to speak? Okay. I understanding is Steve, you, Luchens would like to make another comment. We, we could do, we're going to try to keep this pretty focused, so if there's something that hasn't already been brought up, something new, that, that is fine. And then I know that Angie has some additional correspondence to read into the record. Mr. Luchens, do you have something new?
I'll, I'll pass, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, as, before we close the public hearing, one of the other correspondents?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Jennifer did take about 20-some pages and reduce it into three, so I'm going to paraphrase these letters. And before I start, I would just like to make it clear to the public that unless your letter was submitted by, before last Wednesday, it will not be in the county board packet. Because, as you know, the packets go out and, and, and they go out by Friday. So for those of you that, that don't see your letter in the packet, we do have it, and I'm going to summarize it now. The first letter is from Jessica Treptow, and she is opposed. Her parents live next door, and their home is only 11 feet from the property line, lake access, channel of fire, shared by her parents and the Hentges. It would be stressful to share this with neighbors. Privacy and safety will be lost, and VRBO, Airbnb have their place, but this is not the appropriate location. The next letter is submitted by Tom and Mary Lou Gretsch. They did submit two letters, one of, one of which is in your packet. The new letter talks about sharing private access in the beach. They've spent thousands of dollars to put in this, this access. They're concerned with safety of not knowing who is renting with no criminal contacts. They're concerned with liability if someone gets hurt on their property. Concerned, there's more people to tent and RV and also bring pets. If approved, the interim use permit should not transferred with the property and should expire after one year. Mr. Peternell, I'm sorry, Mike Peternell, yes, did speak. However, he did ask that we reference his letter, so I'll do that, I'll do that quickly. He's concerned with the disruption that the rental will cause on the neighborhood, and that Hentges will not retire for three to five years since they're asking for a 30-year permit. He's questioning if the county grants all these requests or limit the number of them. If approved, then what's the public hearing being held? The next letter is submitted by Tara Miller. She, again, we have two letters for her. I'm going to address the new letter. She is adjacent landowner to the east. Letter from Hedges states there is a natural barrier between the properties, although it's just a thin row of pine trees and lilacs. Even with cameras and, the property owners are not on-site to deal with concerns. Renters are in vacation mode and will not observe quiet hours and will disrupt the quiet, peaceful neighborhood. Currently, kids in the neighborhood run to each other's homes, bike on the road. They will no longer be, do that with unfamiliar people around. Sense of security will be lost. Eric and Brianna Kurtz also posed, concerned about increased traffic. Although three homes border on County Road 154, their driveways are on Red Oak Circle. They believe their request will negatively impact the feel of the neighborhood, which is entirely permanent residence, and they're concerned about more rentals if this one's concerned with safety of unknown renters, negative impact of noise levels, as some work schedules, they need to be in bed early some nights. They don't believe that this use will support local business. Elected officials should represent the majority of the landowners. Hentges did not make the neighbors aware of their plans ahead of time. And if the IUP is approved, they're suggesting a trial period and have it not transferred to the next owners. A letter that were in your packet was from Brian and Tony Polarski. They're opposed, concerned with unknown people, vandalism, theft, increased traffic and noise, pollution, littering, safety, especially for children and pets. Eric and Brianna Kurtz, they live across the road, and they're concerned with strangers each week and weekend, increasing traffic and leading to additional rentals on the lake. Rebecca Petron is opposed. She was raised on Red Oak Circle and lived there for many years. Most homeowners are long-term residents, and a rental property is not a good fit. They talk about how the Hentges' vacation home is in a thick wooded area and secluded and is not comparable to Red Oak Circle neighborhood. Even with security cameras, there's no guarantee that renters won't cause problems or break the rules. A rental should not be allowed just because the house was inexpensive, expensive to purchase. They're concerned with stranger within the neighborhood, impact of shared access on the neighbors. I just want to make sure that I have all of them listed. Yes, that, that concludes, that concludes the written correspondence. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask, before we close this public hearing, do you, our three times, is there anybody who has not already spoken wishing to speak on this issue? Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Madam Chair, do you have any questions for staff or for the applicants? Seeing none is our motion.
Madam Chair, before you, a motion is made. I have a question on a possible addition to the requirements. Would that be, be now or?
Yeah, I think, I think it makes sense to go ahead and have that conversation.
For staff as well, is there any requirement or has there been in the past that the interim use permit does not transfer with the sale of the property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, that is an option that is allowed under the ordinance and state statute. I think it's been talked about a little bit in the past. And so, yes, that could be an option. And if I could, we have another couple other comments that I'd like to also read the
Please do.
Conditions. Okay, so I'm going to read the Planning Commission's recommended conditions into the record, just so we have that for the public. The proposal would be to allow the interim use permit through December 31st of 2025. The other idea that you could, you could talk about on that particular issue, and you've done this before on some controversial requests, is that the county board could limit it to two years as sort of a trial period and then also include the condition that it not transferred to subsequent owners. The second condition that the Commission recommended was that the maximum occupancy shall be eight persons. A lodging license is required prior to renting out the home. A full measurement device is required prior to the lodging license. A licensee shall keep a report detailing the use of the home. And a ring buoy attached to a minimal rope is also required near the shore as life-saving equipment. So Madam Chair, those are the recommended conditions of, of the Planning Commission, except for the suggestion or on the consideration to limit it to less than, than that five years.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there other comments or questions?
So Madam Chair, just Angie just said about, you know, where you give them like a two-year timeframe. Does that require them to come back or is that just a look back and if everything is fine, then they can continue on?
Ms. Berg?
Madam, Madam Chair, Commissioner Notch, our suggestion would be that they need to come back for a new public hearing. That would be the recommendation.
So then they'd have another fee again?
That's correct.
You know, and I, you know, I understand, you know, part of the, what can be the frustration. You know, even if I had bought that home, I could go away for the winter and still rent it out to multiple families or individuals. And, you know, in my, it could be the same situation. I, I guess if nobody else would have a question, I guess I'd like to form the motion and accepting what the, the Planning Commission offered with a couple of changes. And one would be that the IUP or interim use permit doesn't transfer with the property. And then I would like to propose or include maybe a three-year interim period. To give, you know, to give the, to give everybody a chance to say, hey, it's working or it's not. But again, they have to apply for this lodging permit every year. And I'm assuming if there's issues, the county can deny that or it can come before the board as well.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion to approve the Planning Commission recommendations with the change from five years to three years and that it would be, it would not transfer if the property was sold. Is there a second?
I'll second. Mergan.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Any discussion, any further discussion on this, board members?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Notch, I think those are reasonable. And if it passes, I would be supportive of that.
However, I'm going to, I'm going to decline. I'm going to deny. And I take a, take a look at that Red Oak Circle and the neighborhood that they have, and also the fact that this is on an environmental lake. And the impact that making that a vacation rental would be no different than having a resort cabin open there every day or every week of the year. You know, in our comp plan, we talk about the integrity of neighborhoods. When Red Oak Circle was developed, I don't believe there was ever an intent to have a rental there. And that does destroy the integrity and the, the nature of that neighborhood. They, they do have the option presently to, to rent it out on a long-term basis, as anybody would. And so I, I look at, at opening this up that if we go on this environmental lake in this neighborhood, that opens it up to just about anything. And I think we have the discretion of where we'd like to see these vacation rentals and where we would not. And I, I don't believe this is the correct spot. So I'm going to vote against, but I do appreciate your recommendation, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Persky. Anybody else? Other, if not, we'll go ahead and move to voting.
Harold? I just want to make an additional comment. And I appreciate Commissioner Persky's comments, but I, I think overall, we might have to then take a look at how we do these VRBO or requests throughout the county. Because we just had an argument about the cozy corners a couple of weeks ago with, you know, all of the drowning in the lake and stuff like that. You know, obviously we have another public hearing after this. Where, where does the line get drawn? I mean, I appreciate, you know, I drove through this neighborhood. I talked to the residents there. It's not the environmental lake. I really appreciate it. I mean, I live by a, a not so heavily trafficked lake. But when you're limited to eight-person occupancy, you know, that could be a, any family. I mean, I've done rented one of these before on a lake and I don't know. If, if you have good renters, they're going to be nice to their neighbors. So that was just my comment.
Okay. And thank you. Any, if there is any other comments by board members? Got a motion and a second and we can proceed to have the roll. I will say I cannot see all board member spaces at the same time. So I just want to make sure that there, now I can't. Well, at least I can see your names. Okay? All right, seeing none. Randy, would you mind taking the, do you, Lee, do you have one? Your, my, your camera was off.
It's on now.
Okay. Do you have something else you would? Do, do you have anything you wanted to add or any other questions before we vote?
The horse, the horse has been dead for 20 minutes.
I agree. I agree. So let's not make it more dead. Randy?
Okay, Commissioner Lesberg, District Four, how do you vote? Lee?
What?
What's your vote on the?
Oh, I move approval.
District Five?
Aye.
District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Nay.
District Three?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, everyone who participated and hopefully that there will be, continue to be communication and those, you understand what the challenges are right now. Thank you so much. Madam Chair, we have item, we have item F1, which is another public hearing. Also on a vacation home rental submitted by David and Laura Ozzy of Edina, Minnesota. And Angie has all of the information related to that request. Okay, thank you. Angie?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the Planning Commission held this public hearing also on December 17th. And this is for a vacation private home rental located in Monson Township on Elkview Road. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to recommend approval of the interim use on a four to three vote. The proposed conditions are listed on your packet, page 143 and 144. We do not have any callers on the line except for the applicants. And that would be Ellen Windshield and David Ozzy. And also with that, we do have a summary of written testimony that we can provide for you when you would like us to.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, let's go ahead and open this public hearing. And is David queued up to go first? Or is it Ellen? Or are you together?
Hi, this is Vivid. I'm not sure if Ellen wants to go first. I know she has a work call at 10:40. So just in the interest of time for her, if she wants to go first, I'm happy to defer to her. But if she wants to, to not go first, I can, I can also.
Ellen, would you like to go?
She might, she might.
Everyone, can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Perfect. Sorry, sorry about that. I was just trying to figure out the mute button there. I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with that. Thank you for, for letting us join. I know I submitted a letter to, to the board to review, but I would just I think that Steve had the opportunity to address some of the concerns that our neighbors have raised. And I just kind of want to reiterate the fact that, you know, this, this cabin was purchased by my family. My two sisters and I, David is my brother-in-law. And we're so thrilled to have this family property and to use it as a family cabin. And it's been a longtime dream of ours. And so really, the occasional use as, as a rental property was just an idea to offset some of those operating incomes and make this a feasible dream for our family. So we're really excited about this, this possibility. I understand some of the concerns that our, our neighbors have raised. And thankfully, after our last meeting, we've been able to address a number of those concerns. I, I think submitted is a list of house rules. Obviously, we tend, intend to be very particular with who we let into our, our precious family cabin. So hopefully that, that can bring some ease to our neighbors. And I know last time there was some concerns raised about emergency access to the property, given that it is on a private, private road. And, and one thing that I, I want to note, I think that we maybe missed last time is that though it is a narrow road, it, it does have a, a loop around. So you are able to kind of access it from two different directions. So I, I just want to put that on the record so that people know that there's a little bit more option to navigate to the property. We've also, David had the opportunity to speak to the fire chief for Chain of Lakes Fire Rescue, who assured us that there are fire safety plans for our property. So I think some of those details were outlined in, in David's letter. And we've also had some recent instances during this winter weather where we've required large-scale propane trucks and a massive flatbed tow truck. Unfortunately, we had some car issues that navigated down the road without issue and, and loaded our SUV onto the bed of the truck and was able to, to access the property just fine. So I just wanted to put that onto the record to help, help ease some of the concerns about access for those emergency vehicles. So I appreciate the opportunity to address some of those concerns. And yeah, if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to address them.
All right. Thanks, Ellen. I will go next if, if that's all right. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. We are requesting approval of the interim use permit in order to rent out our family cabin located at 20366 Elkview Road. Based on the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was approved on December 17th, 2020, the Planning Commission established the following findings of fact. The proposal is consistent with the Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, specifically Sections 4 dash, or 4.18, 6.60, and 9.36G. A vacation rent, home rental is no allowed use in the R1 district, which ours is in. The proposal is compatible with present and future land uses in the area. Environmental concerns have been addressed through the conditions and requirements of the lodging license. No information was provided regarding the impact of property values in the area as a result of the proposal. There is a concern, as, as Ellen mentioned, with the narrow road and the ability for emergency vehicles to access the site. It was recommended to, to us that we discuss the matter with the local fire department, which I did speak with Dean Holdhouse on two different occasions. And he has stated up on Elkview, as you can see, you know, there is a private drive that goes on, off of Elkview onto our property. And what he did say was they can park their trucks up on that road if for some reason they're not able to go down that private drive. And if there does happen to be a structure fire or something like that, they are able to access it from Elkview. Or they can also bring portable water pumps down to the lake. The proposal of minimal effect on public health, safety and welfare of the residents. And this proposal conforms to the following goal from the Stearns County Comprehensive Plan Living Pillar, living, the living goal, which is to support housing options that give people in all stages, in all life stages and all economic means viable choices for safe, stable and affordable homes. And the proposal will have a minimal effect on public services and facilities. So these are all the findings of fact from our Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing that we had on December 17th, 2020. Based on these findings of fact and the concerns we've addressed with our neighbors, we're asking for approval of this interim use permit in order to be able to occasionally rent out our cabin throughout the year to offset our cabin ownership expenses. I'm happy to address any specific concerns that are brought up during the public hearing process as they come up. And I just wanted to thank you all for your time this morning.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having trouble finding my mute button, my mute and unmute. Is there any, I don't believe there's anybody else on the call right now. Is there anybody else who wanted to, to verbally present information? If not, I understand, Ms. Berg, that there is some other information to be read into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair.
This time? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We received four letters. The first is from John and Beckyus. They are opposed. They feel that it is not compatible with the surrounding community. Access road is collectively maintained and concerned with renters blocking the road. Concerned with late night of renters, lack of sharing the local contact person's information. And they are concerned about the ability of emergency vehicles to access the rental. Correspondence was received by Russ Howe. He is concerned with limited access in and out of the property. The only road accepts one-way traffic. Correspondence was received from Everett and Mearnut Engelbretzen, and they are requesting a written copy of the renters agreement. Craig Bueller was opposed, citing shared driveways maintained by the landowners along it, concerned about impacts of renters using it, concerned about quiet hours. Who ensures that only six people are using the rental? Asking questions about who they contact if there is a problem and how long will it take to resolve? Concerned about unknown people in their community. And if the permit is approved, they request it not to pass on to future owners. Those are the only written correspondence received. I too did reach out to Dean, the chief at the Chain of Lakes fire district, because we had not heard back from the applicants as of Friday. And, and he reiterated much of what David indicated. Dean doesn't, does express concern with emergency services in the winter. The steep slope on the narrow, unmaintained road. He did say that they have four-wheel-drive vehicles and they would be able to, by first responder calls, but an ambulance and or fire truck would be very difficult. But he did say first and foremost, their job is, they are committed to providing public service to whoever and wherever they can. And so he, he also noted that in the, because Commissioner Lenzmeyer always says that we're not the only game in town. And insurance companies are, are often reaching out to fire departments now. And their ratings are based on the provision of services. So I thought that was interesting. That is all I have for. That is all I have for public.
That's the most. Is there that you wanted to add, David or Ellen, that wasn't, you didn't already?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate a couple items. So I know that, you know, they called this road an unmaintained road. I think there is actually a fund that all the neighbors put into for maintaining this private road. And I do know that Craig, our neighbor next door, lives at his home year-round. And he's been plowing, and then we also have another neighbor that does the majority of the plowing for the road. We've been up there a few times this winter, and that drive down, you know, that kind of windy drive has been really clear for us. And I think it is based on that fact that, you know, people are there year-round. They want to make sure that they're able to access that. There's a lot of ice fishermen that enter the lake, you know, from this road. So there, you know, there are people that are accessing it. I think, you know, there was a letter that was written from Russ Howe. I think he's probably over a half mile away and actually not on this road. So I'm not really sure his concern, he might just be familiar with the road. And then Everett and Mearna Engle-Bretson, I did give them a copy of our written rules and regulations, and they appreciated that, and I have email correspondence from that. I think all the other items have been addressed, you know, in our previous public hearing. There was, I think, one question from Mrs. Beckyus about contact information. I did give her my cellphone number. If, you know, there's any, if she has any questions for me, we didn't give out our emergency contact information because we haven't been approved for this permit yet. So I didn't think it was appropriate to give that out at this time. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Last call, is there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? None, the public hearing is closed. Members, do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, yeah, I had the concerns especially about the emergency vehicles. I'm glad you were able to get a hold of Chief Holdhouse. I made several attempts, was not able to it. So I'm glad Angie and David that you were able to do that. That gives me a better sense of comfort about having that become a rental and should give you as well, knowing that at least they're aware of the situation that we can, you know, be as helpful as we can in an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky.
And Madam Chair, if I can just add on to that.
Yes, Commissioner Notch.
Being a member of the fire department, actually, this home, if you look at that private drive, is probably in a better situation than anybody further down that road because it will definitely be more accessible than anybody further, you know, onto that private road. But yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'd move approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, for a second.
Second, Commissioner Notch.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch. Any further discussion? Seeing or none, Randy, would you take the roll?
District five.
Aye.
District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And thank you both for your attention to addressing some of the concerns that were raised. And it's nice to see a little Minnesota join our meeting.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Board members, quick question. We have one more environmental services issue. I'm not sure that it will take very long, but my question is, can you wait until after that for the break? Or given the time, do you need a break now? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Let's go ahead and go to item G, and then we'll take our break.
Madam Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. That would be packet page 175, which is to set a public hearing. And Angie, if you could go through the expanded public hearing request that we were talking about, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. So as you were all participating in discussion that we had in December related to solar energy, we're bringing this item to you for your consideration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 2, to consider changes to the solar farm standards. In addition, we also have been meeting through our ordinance review committee with the Planning Commission and the county board on various changes to our land use ordinance that are going to be implementing our new comprehensive plan shaped Stearns. So with that, Shelley and I thought that rather than waiting until May or June to have a public hearing on the most recent items that we talked about, we could do all of this at once. So the proposal in front of you today, members of the board, is to consider holding a public hearing on solar farms, rural tourism, accessory dwelling units, agricultural employee housing, and last but not least, manufactured home provisions. And that is one item that I will be following up with the Planning Commission on because we did not talk about that, but it is a need that we've been talking with the state and our. So with that, that's what we're asking you to consider today.
Okay, so we would be able to finish up a number of items and give some certainty to people. Any questions about that to either Ms. Berg or to Ms. Benson? Or a motion to set these on for public hearing? We'll make our decisions. All right, a motion from Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch. Any further discussion? This is just solely to set up the public hearing. Okay, let's then take the roll. Randy?
District one, Terrell.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Terrell.
Right, thank you. So we'll obviously need a little bit of time for that if we have members of the public wanting to weigh in. Okay, great. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back to parks. Hi, Ben.
Hello, how are you?
We are back from recess. Ben, I think we've got, you're up next.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. The Parks item for your consideration today can be found on packet pages 185 through 189. This item is a request for the board to adopt a resolution in support of the Park Department's request to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the federal recreational trail grant program. The application requests $25,000 to assist with seal coating, crack filling, and air patching the Lake Wobegon Trail from Sauk Center to the Todd County Line. This trail maintenance request does require a minimum match of 25%. We are proposing a $25,000 or a one-to-one match with the matching funds coming from the Park's operating budget. The Park Commission, the Park Commission, excuse me, at their January meeting did unanimously recommend that the county board support this application. So the recommended board action is to adopt the federal recreation grant resolution in which the Park Department is asking for $25,000 for the $25,000 cash match to assist with maintenance of the Lake Wobegon Trail. With that, I can take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Ben?
I have a comment. In reading through this, there's only a 25% match that's required. And that's a little over $6,000, $6,250. We're throwing $25,000 at them again. This looks to me like another death by a thousand cuts added on to the taxpayers again. And I can't be supporting that kind of thing.
So Ben, could you address why one-to-one, you're proposing a one-to-one match versus the 25%?
Just in the past, that's what we've also provided as a match of that $25,000. Providing a little bit more of a match just shows that the grant panelist board that were committed to the project, it does cost about $50,000 to do this type of work on a four to five-mile section. this type of work on a four to five mile section of trail. And if we're going to be spending that money, I guess it's just a way to hopefully help better ensure that we get those funds is the only reason that we, we provide that because we wouldn't be spending that money anyways on that section of trail.
So I'm hearing you say it's a competitive pot. And the reason for going more is that we would have a better chance of getting it. And if we don't get it, something we need to do. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct.
Okay. Other comments? Jeff, I always have that question. If it's a higher match, what's the reason? There's not a good reason. We want to know. Okay, is there? Commissioner Persky, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll move that item.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Notch. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just real quickly, Ben, about how the resurfacing, how long does that usually last? How often do we have to do this?
So this is actually not resurfacing. This is a seal coat. And we try to do a section about every five years. And we've been consistently getting this grant over the last five years. And this is the last section before we start, again, going back to that other section where we begin the process over again. So we get about a five-year period out of it.
Okay. And what this does, though, it does delay then the reconstruct, opposed to having you sit there and deteriorate, correct?
It helps. Yes, it helps.
Thank you for those questions and, and comments. Anybody else? Otherwise, I think we're ready for Randy to take the role.
Okay, District Two.
Hi.
District Three.
May.
District Four. Lee.
Hi.
District Five.
Hi.
District One.
All right.
Passes four to one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And I think that, you know, Commissioner Mergan's point is always well taken. So let's, you know, if it makes a difference, fine. If it doesn't, we don't want to be putting some, anything extra on. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Human Resources. I believe it's Jennifer. Is it Mike? Are you with her?
Yes, we should have Jennifer, Sharon, and our consultant along with us. So I think Jennifer's going to kick it off.
Okay, great.
Good morning, Madam Chairmakers of the Board, Jennifer Thorson, Human Resources. The county entered into an agreement with Consultant Rod Kelsey to conduct the triennial job classification review. Mr. Kelsey has approved the classification and compensation consulting in public and private sectors over 35 years. The triennial review process evaluates similarly situated job classifications on a three-year rotation, and efforts to ensure jobs are assigned to the appropriate pay grades. In 18, we did 54 classifications. It was consistent of clerical support and paraprofessional and skilled labor. In 19, it was 71 classifications of law enforcement, professional, and technical. And in 2020, 50 of our managers were reviewed. The Classification Advisory Team met on January 26th and have approved our recommendations today. And Mr. Kelsey is here this morning to share his findings and his process. Rod, I'll turn it over to you.
I don't know. Is he with us?
I hear you.
Oh, I can hear you. I can't see you. That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, you can't hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Is that right?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, as Jennifer just outlined, this is the last year of the three years of the triennial review process that the Board approved in July of 2017. And Jennifer went through the last two years. I won't take the time to do that unless there are questions on that. 2020 started out in January with internal planning meetings. And in February, there was a leadership meeting in, where HR outlined the steps to be followed. This is very consistent with the first two years that we did everything. And in March, early March, that was, Sharon Westhoff and I met with the department directors in the purpose of those meetings, and they were nicely head-to-head at that time. We could go through and list all the classifications for each department head that was to be included in year three. And we asked them the question, you have comments on these? How do you think these jobs have changed, if at all, in terms of job content? And we took the notes from that as a lead-in then to the next step, which was normally to have meetings with employees to give them instructions. Unfortunately, COVID hit at that point and delayed, but did not totally change the process. And so, Human Resources sent out an instructional video with informational documents, and we started the JDQ process, which we followed in the last two years. The Job Description Questionnaire process is an opportunity for individual employees in each of the classifications included of the 50 classifications to fill out a update, if you will, of what they think their job content is, and also comment on the five factors of the job evaluation system. Let me just take a moment. I believe that you have, as one of your two documents, a document called Summary of Job Evaluation System Factors. I'll just say again, as I did in the previous years, that those are the five factors that form the foundation of the job evaluation process that's been used in Stearns County since the early 2000s. And so, the incumbents sit down sometimes as a group, if there are multiple incumbents, and sometimes individually, and fill out the Job Description Questionnaire, which is designed to be an update of the current classification. So the instructions were, get a copy off the point of your current job description, the official JDQ, or the official job description that exists. Sit down with that, read through that, fill out the JDQ, and have your immediate supervisor sign off. And that sign off process goes all the way to the top. So after that was done, and the job description questionnaires were sent in to Human Resources, not for their review, but for just documentation that they got them, then they sent them to me. I sat down with the current job descriptions, the official job descriptions, plus the job description questionnaires that had been filled out and signed off, and did my JDQ analysis, deciding whether or not there needed to be, or was justified, a change in job grading, or whether there was to be no change in job grading. I sent those results back, and we had some discussions of them, first with the Human Resources team, and then secondly, on the 26th of January with the CAT team, the Classification Advisory Team. And we went through all my recommendations and had questions and answers and inquiries on those things. And then the CAT team signed off on those, and we moved forward to where we are today with the Board presentation. You will have the second document there in front of you, either on the screen or physically, called the Listing of All 50 Classifications Included in Year Three. And those are, as you know, the Director, Manager, and Supervisory classes. And if you just take a look at that for a moment, the format is the same as we used last year. And I would like to have you turn to the last page. There are four pages. And if you, you will turn and, and reference the last page, you will see at the bottom a summary. And I'd like to start there. We had 50 classifications included in year three. There were 15 classification upgrades. Those upgrades are noted, as I say, and we'll come back to this, in the far-right column, where you see bolded figures. If there are two figures, that means that it identifies the current classification as well as the proposed classification. There were no downgrades this year. There were 11 re-titled classifications, and those are noted in the middle column. And there was one vacated classification called Human Services Supervisor 1. There will no longer be two classes of Human Services Supervisor. There will just be one class of Human Services Supervisor. Now, having said that, maybe we could take a couple of examples here. We'll go back to the front page, please. And down the left-hand side, you have all of the identified departments. And in the middle column, if there are no bolded items in the middle column, that means that there is no change in title. And in the far-right-hand column, you will see the recommended and proposed class. And so, as an example, the, let's, we can, oh, and by the way, I have also included in here the three elected positions, County Attorney, Auditor-Treasurer, and also the Sheriff. Now, as you know, some years ago, the elected officials agreed to be placed in the overall system. They are placed in the overall system, but they do not have a job evaluation profile similar to all the other positions. So those are three positions, the elected positions, that are separately and distinctly handled, because they still have their own protocol. If they have an issue with where their position is placed, then they follow the established district court guidelines for presenting to you, as a board, their arguments primarily on their budget, but that can also include their salary. So as we go down the, the listing, if, I think the second page is a little more helpful because it shows more of the retitling. So if we go to the second page, and that begins with the Auditor-Treasurers Office, Building Facilities, et cetera, you'll see an example there under Building Facilities. Facilities Construction Supervisor is the current title of that classification, and it's been retitled to Facility Supervisor: Construction and Maintenance. And in the right-hand column, you'll see Grade 22. There's no bolding there. It says, no, it was retitled, but it was not changed in any grading. Likewise, let's take Building Facilities again. Facilities Manager. There's no titling change there, but you'll note in the right-hand column, it goes from a Grade 28, to my recommendation that it be moved and upgraded to a Grade 29. And that format follows all the way through for all of the classifications. Once the, I'll mention this now, and we can come back to it after you have your chance for, for questions and inquiries. There also is a final step to this. After and until the Board acts on these proposals, we have an opportunity for people to question my recommendations in terms of an appeal process called the Review, Request for Review and Reconsideration. That is a process that has been always in effect way back before even the triennial. And it allows for incumbents who feel that I have made an error in the rating of their job, for whatever reason, to sit down and fill out a form that says, this is where I think you have not recognized the content of my job, either in its overall job content, or in one of the five factors of job evaluation. And here's where I think the job should be placed. Now, that particular document, just like the Job Description Questionnaire, has to be signed off at all levels. And I can tell you, in, in all of this process, that the first-line supervisors and the department directors and managers involved have been very careful in reading through all of these things before they sign off. And there are quite a few cases where notes have been made for my attention. Rod, you missed this, or we don't agree with this, and so I think you should not pay attention to that particular thing. There's a very, and, and, you know, in the time of COVID, all of this stuff is digital and virtual. And so, we can't have those direct contacts as easily. But a very careful job, in my opinion, was done. So once that's, once you take your action, whatever it might be on this, hopefully it's to approve my recommendations, then the appeal process kicks in. And then, any appeals are sent to me for review, and I comment on those, just as I have, and make recommendations. Some appeals over the three years, I think, the first year, I don't think any appeals were approved. There were a couple filed. I don't have that right in front of me. The second year, I think there were a couple that were filed, and a couple were approved. I don't know what will happen this year in terms of the appeals process. I hope that is a fairly reasonable recitation of the steps involved. And Madam Chair, I turn it back to you for any questions that you and members of the Board may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that, that walk-through. Is there anything, Jennifer or Sharon, you want to add before we just open up to members?
Madam Chair, I don't have any further information to add. Thank everyone for participating in the process.
Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's got a, we're on. So in our Highway Department, for any reason why, you know, you're from Equipment Shop Supervisor. So, you know, makes it sound like it's whatever equipment's in the shop is what he's supervising, to be Equipment Fleet Manager, which then makes it seem like it's anything rolling down the road. Is there any reason why you went just call it like, I mean, Equipment Manager or something like, why we need any equipment manager?
The retitling, Commissioner, the retitling process was started in our March discussions with department heads. And when I talked to Jody Teich in the Highway Department, we talked about the fact that the Equipment Shop Supervisor, looking to the future, is going to have a relationship with the mechanic, I think, also, in the law enforcement operation. And longer term, it would appear that there would be a logical organizational move toward having this position be a manager over the Equipment Fleet, so that the fleet of equipment that you have, the rolling fleet of equipment you have in the county, can be more managed on an entirety basis rather than just, it's not piecemeal now, that's not the correct term, but the relationship will be stronger across all of the rolling equipment, as I understand that.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Notch, is there anything else with that one?
Nope, that's all.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lunsford, I think you're talking, but you're muted.
Be able to do that to me. I don't know if this is a question for you, Rod, or for Dr. Willie. When we redid the Assessor's Office, what's the new, new title there, Ben, that, what do we call, for example, what Jeff is now?
In Property Services.
Ah, is that it?
Property Services, yes. The, the Assessor Office? On page, on page four. Yes. And, and, and thank you for raising that, if I might. For all of your attention, I neglected something on page four at the bottom. And you'll see a note there that says, Property Services Division Director, Land Services Manager, which was previously Division Director of Land Management, and Recording Services Manager. Manager. Those positions were reviewed earlier in the year 2020, when Property Services Division was created. I thank you for pointing that out, sir. I missed that.
Okay. And much beyond that, I mean, we I can appreciate where there may be some question or disagreement on classifications here. I mean, if each of these positions doesn't, if the individuals holding these positions don't personally believe they're critical to the organization, we probably wouldn't want them around. But so the idea that there's some question about this, or this should be higher, that should be lower, really is no surprise. And so as a result, this is the best stab at it. Some of these decisions that we're making relative to organizational goals, the appropriate classification of people in the various positions across the organization. It's the only point that I would make is, and we don't have enough information on it yet, but our whole COVID experience will have significant implications on this. And I guess we'll just have to wait and play it out. We just we're concluding a three-year process here. But it's in some ways, it's dated almost as soon as it's done, due to no fault of the folks involved here, but just to the outside circumstances. So this was designed or undertaken with the idea this would have longer-term implications than it does, but through really no fault of anybody involved in the process, it will have a much shorter shelf life, unfortunately, than we had hoped to.
Well, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think that's a that's a that's a good point. I will say this, though, that the organizations and the departments in Stearns County are going to continue to evolve and to change. A good example is just as we talked about the property services area. And there are protocols already established for any new jobs. And so on a go-forward basis, I would like to respectfully suggest that that this does not have to be redone for a number of years. I think that this has placed the county in a pretty good position, except for, as I said, if they're going to be organizational and departmental reorganizations, as was the case, or a creation of a new one, like Property Services, there's an internal protocol to handle that. There are internal protocols to handle new jobs. And then finally, we had one vacated job this year. When a job and you're, I think, one of the points I hope you were making is, everybody thinks they're they're critical and important to the role, and they are, that they're carrying out. But jobs are going to change, and the the job responsibilities and content changes. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that, looking forward, you will not need to do a comprehensive review like this for at least some time, period of time, that your established protocols that you have already will cover you.
Well, regardless of the veracity of the timing on this, we are in a much better spot than when we initially undertook this some years ago. We found ourselves in a position where we hadn't reviewed this process for 20 years. So we're getting better.
Yep.
So it sounds like the action needed today is for us to approve these recommendations. And I'm wondering if somebody wants to move that.
I'll move it since I was most critical of the process, so I guess I'll.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. You have a second?
Persky, second.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, let's go ahead and.
District three.
Hi.
District four.
Hi.
District five.
Hi.
District one.
Hi.
District two.
Hi.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Randy. Sorry about that.
No, I just passed five zero.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thanks for all the work on this. This is delicate work. And Lee, hearing what you were saying about how long it had been since the pastime reinforces how much.
We got a whole different cast of characters now.
Yeah, and you may not be still choosing to serve for 20 years. So hopefully, this will last a subject.
Life changing really fast compared to back in the day.
That's true. That is true. Thank you again. I think administration is next. We've got a COVID update and potentially.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Really, two things. One is just an update from Emergency Management Public Health. And I think that's who we were going to have go first is Aaron. Are you here? Oh, yes, you are. So Aaron, Aaron will provide that. And then we'll then we'll. The second thing we'll talk about is the Business Relief Program and how that went and actually proposed that we add some dollars to to the program to finish it out. But first, you can go to Aaron and Melissa.
Okay, Aaron and Melissa, take it off. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I have a brief slideshow here this morning. We are going to.
Aaron, can you turn yourself up?
Uh-oh, can you not hear me?
I mean, no, you're not muted. You're not loud.
Okay, is that any better?
Yeah.
Yes, same here.
Okay. So we just wanted to walk through some of the numbers that we have been working with over the course of our vaccine distribution. To date, Stearns County has received 2,600 doses allocated for the priority groups of Phase 1A. As of today, the end of the day, we will have distributed 1,411 doses. We have the 1,200 remaining doses that were allocated as the second doses for those first people who received them. And we began administering second doses this week with our public safety folks. Our priorities for this week, and we are going to be receiving later today, 600 doses, 500 to continue with Priority Group 1A, and 100 have been allocated to E-12 teachers and childcare providers. 90% of these doses do need to be administered within the first 72 hours after we've received them in accordance with MDH guidelines. We do plan to have 100% of them distributed yet this week, meeting that 72-hour requirement. As we said as well here, that we are going to continue with and begin that administration of second doses to Group 1A. The last thing I wanted to touch on was our community partnerships. We continue to work very closely with Centra Care. Most recently, we have worked with them on making sure that our shelters throughout the county are being able to be vaccinated, both staff and residents, as well as continuing to make vaccine available to the people in Priority Group 1A. We also have been in support of the MDH vaccination site over the course of the last two weeks that was at Rivers Edge Convention Center, specifically targeting the population of 65-plus in the community. We do know that they will be back in a little over a week to do second doses, and we continue to plan to support that effort as well. So a brief update today. I certainly am available for any questions, and I know Melissa Huberty here is her is here as well.
Do you mind just speaking a little bit to what we know, and I know know is a changing item, could be different by this afternoon, about how many vaccines have come to our county? And then a little bit more about Centra Care, because they're they're obviously, except people are able to do it through their provider, that's a good thing, and they're through the county. Can you just talk a little bit about what else they might be doing?
We have, as I said, we received a total of 2,600 doses here in Stearns County to local public health. Centra Care receives a different allocation. They are a provider, so they have direct shipment from MDH. I'm not sure on their total allocation of what they've received between the Healthcare Coalition's and them directly, what that has looked like. But according to the reports from MDH earlier this week, there's nearly 15,000 people that have been vaccinated in Stearns County, and that certainly would be a collaborative effort amongst all of us. We continue to certainly want to work together as well, making vaccine available to other providers, and we will continue to do so as it becomes available for us to do that redistribution.
Thank you. I know, I mean, there's probably some other questions or comments from board members on this, so really appreciate the competitive nature, too. The paper certainly showed that we're we're working hard in our county to be getting it out to the the people for whom it's designed. Joe?
Madam Chair, I have a question. I was going to wait till issues by commissioners, but first of all, I just want to commend everybody that worked with the Minnesota Department of Health these last two weeks at Rivers Edge, between the counties, National Guard, volunteers, and nurses. They did a fantastic job. Aaron, are do we are we going to receive information about more vaccines coming in? I mean, I had gotten questions about when can I get my shot? When can I get my shot? And just wondering, is that really information coming out today, tomorrow? Did I hear that we are going to be getting more allocation?
So according to the news release yesterday, it did sound as though Minnesota did receive additional doses and was going to make the largest distribution yet moving forward for vaccines. Starting last week was our first opportunity to have influence over how many vaccines we wanted to receive in the county. So on Tuesday or Wednesday of each week, we submit a report to the Department of Health saying this is how many vaccines we would like, this is what we feel we can distribute within the 72-hour timeframe. And then they fill those requests based on availability of vaccine. So for example, last week, we asked for 1,000 doses and we got 600. And so we continue to put in those requests, and we'll make that available to the groups that identified by MDH as soon as we reasonably can.
And and did I understand? And then is that separate from what Centra Care is doing? Because they're doing a wonderful job, from what I can see, as far as doing the best they can getting those out.
Yep, they do receive a different allocation, and that goes directly to them.
Okay.
So we thought there's, and it'd be great if you say that there's an additional one, but there's kind of three. I don't know if you can call it a pot of a vaccine. There's what we're getting directly for through public health. There's what Centra Care and the Health Coalition, counting that as one. And then what MDH is sending to the pilot. Is that correct? Is there any other ones floating out there that that doesn't cover?
So that is, this point is primarily.
At this point.
Seen, yep. And then we do have a variety of additional providers, other healthcare clinics and institutions that want to be able to administer vaccine. And those are those contracts and those processes are under development or may be in place already and are just awaiting vaccines.
So expansions to pharmacies, et cetera, is kind of dependent on how quantity, right?
Absolutely.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Chair, I got a couple other questions here. Aaron.
Joe, real quick, let's just see if anybody ran another round. Let's just see if anybody else has any other questions first, and I'm happy to return to you.
Mergen, I have a I have something a little off-topic here, but want to thank Aaron for sending me the link for the flu, flu website, flu cases website. But then that brings up another question on my part. I was wondering if she would also have statistics, the total number of deaths that have occurred in Minnesota in, say, last five years? Would you have something like that available, Aaron?
Are you? Oop, I'm there.
I don't know, did you hear that or not?
So you're looking for the total number of deaths in five years? Are you looking for influenza or any specific?
No, just total number of deaths in Minnesota in each of the last five years? Would you have something like that available?
I imagine we could find it. I don't right now, but I will see what I can find, and I can certainly share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's helpful information. And I know there was an article regarding flu deaths in the last few years, but flu deaths and overall deaths, it's just helpful. We all get asked a lot of questions about these. Steve or Lee, otherwise, we'll go back to Joe. Okay, Joe?
Yes, first of all, we've got overwhelming number of people that want to get the vaccine, Aaron, but also there's a there's a contingent that is in opposition to the vaccine. And it and it sounds to me like there's a lot of misinformation perhaps about what side effects or areas concerning the vaccine. Are we making any effort to get out good information so that we can, you know, make sure we're taking care of this virus as in many places as we can?
Thank you, Joe. Aaron?
Absolutely. So one of our great methods of being able to do so and have consistent and quality information is through our website, being able to direct people there as things change, information is updated, more research becomes available. And we work very hard to keep that up to date. We are also working today, Janet Midas, our Communications Manager, and myself, to be able to send something out with kind of a status of where we're at in Stearns County and where people can go for additional information. Janet has done a great job of being able to keep people apprised of what we're working on and what's happening with our COVID response, both through press releases as well as social media. And we continue to do that and to work and engage our community partners as well to make sure that, to the best of our ability, the information that's getting out there is accurate, and that people know that when they come to us for that information, we're providing things that are accurate, safe, and trustworthy.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Persky, anything else, or does that cover it for right now? I think we've got probably got a lot more questions once there's more quantity, because there's lots of people, including essential workers, people who are perhaps living in public housing, or underrepresented groups. But right now, we got a whole lot of people 65 and older that are wanting to know when, and educators. Okay, thank you for that part of the update. Mike, you want to switch over to?
Yeah, we'd like to. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd like to provide a summary of the Business Relief Program. As you know, we received a little over $3 million from the state a few weeks ago with delegated to us to get out to the business community. And we've had a team working on this, much as we did on the on the CARESAC dollars. And I think, Sarah, are you going to run us through the summary, if you would?
Yes. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to just give you a brief update in a somewhat similar fashion as I did the last round, just to let you know where we're at as of today on our business and nonprofit relief program. We did close the application period. Applications were open from January 11th to January 28th. The county was allocated $3,84,000 by the State of Minnesota for this program, and we had we have surpassed that in requests, so we decided to close applications as of last Friday. As of now, the county HRA and the St. Cloud EDA staff have performed their initial review of all applications and provided recommendations on funding to the county committee made up of the Administrator, Auditor Treasurer, and Environmental Services Director. State deadline for this program is March 15th, and so we need to have all funds spent and distributed by that time. This is just a snapshot for you to see that we've received a total of 423 applications. This is just a by-day total, so it was very took off very well at first and has been fairly steady throughout the application period. This is just a by-day total, so it was very, took off very well at first and has been fairly steady throughout the application period. Number of applications total received by business type. This is an updated slide from the last time. As you can see, bars and restaurants are our number one indicator there. Over one quarter of our applicants were bars and restaurants, with shopping and retail being being the next biggest category. As far as where within the county these applications came from. Almost half of them are 205 out of the 423 were within the city of St. Cloud. The remaining 218 are kind of spread out through the rest of the county. And I do think we have a very good array of them here. We have 29 cities within the county and 24 of the 29 cities had an application. So, almost all cities. And then 17 of the 34 townships or half of the townships had a business from within their jurisdiction apply. So, it seems like we had a good wide array across the county. As far as our application status, as I mentioned, there's about 423 applicants. There's a couple outliers there that were duplicates. But of that 417, we had 233 that we approved, we're recommending approval. 22 that are pending with information we still have to look into and 162 that were denied. And I'll get into those in just a minute. Do you want to look by dollar amount? We have 2.9 or almost 3 million approved and pending of 200,000. So, our total recommended amount right now would be the 3,173,000 in the bottom right. And as, as you know, that does exceed the 3,840,000 that we've been allocated by the state so far. Some of the reasons for application denial, I did mention on this slide, there was 162 denied applications. Some of the reasons for that was, we had a couple, 11 that were not registered to Secretary of State or had a tax lien. That was a reason for denial. Then you'll see we had the revenue categories here are the next three. We had revenues of, revenues of the entity were actually higher in 2020 than they were in 2019. That's 47 applicants. We denied those for funding. And then we had applicants that had revenue loss from each year, but they were under the 20% mark, which is just a factor that we had set as a committee in order to be able to allocate that 3 million we were given. So, those are the top reasons for denial. Now, I, I put together just a couple of quick slides on the ones that were approved applicants. So, my first slides on my graphs were all applications, 400 and some. And this pairs it down to just where the money is looking to go with the approved or the pending applications. So, you'll see 40% within the city of St. Cloud. And then you can, I did them in descending order here, so you can kind of see which jurisdiction businesses are getting the most. And this is pretty similar to what we saw in the CARES Act funding due to the number of businesses in the communities that that have the businesses located within. As you can expect, based on total number of applicants, the number one business type that we're supporting in this program is your restaurants and bars with over 900,000 going to that category. Lodging and travel, the hotels, the motels and the busing companies, those for instances are the next, just under 500,000 funding going there. So, just to let you know, next step, as I said a couple of times, we have 3,840,000 to disperse from the state. We plan to send out checks to those approved businesses within the next week or so. And then either the HRA or the city EDA will notify those entities via email that were not awarded the funds. So that they, so that they don't continue to expect funding. The county is looking to correspond with the hotels and motels and the restaurants and bars that didn't apply in the first round, because what we were finding as a committee is that some of these that were applying, one of our criteria was that they had to be locally owned and operated. But as we met as a committee and reviewed applications, what we were finding is owners and operators of those entities that just because they don't reside in Stearns County, they're not able to apply through the county that they do reside in. And since they pay property taxes, employ our community members and really do serve our community, that it would be probably most appropriate for those entity types to, to apply through the county program. So, we are looking to perhaps make a direct connection with those and give them an additional week or two to send an application for review. And because of those factors and the fact that we have over $3.1 million in approved applications, we are asking for board action today to allocate an additional $500,000 in funding in order to be able to fund the entities that we've already looked at approving or in pending status. And then be able to further reach out to those lodging and restaurant bar establishments. So, with that, Mike, I don't know if you want to take it away from there and summarize?
Yeah, Sarah, that's all. Really not much to add, other than the $500,000. If you recall, at the end of 2020, the board approved a resolution setting aside some CARES dollars that were remaining for future use for, you know, COVID-related items, including business relief. And I think that was a dollar amount of $5 million, Sarah, is that right? So, we would, we would use those remaining CARES Act dollars to allocate this extra half a million towards this program. And I don't know that we'll spend it all, but we wanted to have enough to take care of those additional allocations that are, are applications that we know we're going to get. I think we have a pretty good estimate of where we're going to be at this time anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. That's really helpful information and pretty interesting breakdowns. Are there any questions, comments or a motion to approve that? $500,000, up to $500,000?
Mergan, I would move to approve it.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Hey, any, anything further?
Yeah, just this one last thing that I couldn't see, and I don't think it's gonna matter. I think people are pretty supportive of this, but you know, if we don't do this, we'd have to pare back what we approved, or what's been tentatively approved. And none of the committee members felt that that was an appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Doesn't look like it. I think we can go ahead and proceed to the roll call, Randy.
District four. Lee? Are you still there, Lee?
Yeah, I approve.
Okay, district five.
Hi.
District one.
Hi.
District two.
Hi.
District three.
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank, thank you to the committee for all your work on this. This is a lot to be doing and it obviously is really important to these businesses. Thank you. Anything else under administration, Mike? Otherwise, let's, okay, let's move to issues by commissioners. Jeff?
Say me?
Okay. Lee, you got anything?
Yeah. Question for Steve Notch, wearing his other hat. Are you guys at Stearns Electric talking about the pancake feed again? Or haven't you made a decision yet?
No, it's probably a little bit early. I think there's a little bit of snow on the ground yet. August isn't quite here.
Okay, well, no, but.
But they will be opening, or the tentative plan is to start opening your offices around April 5th.
Okay. Well, that's a big deal. I mean, I can't imagine coming together in 20 minutes, you know, so.
Well, tied in with that, we have our Fireman's Ham Barbecue usually at the community center where Pancake Feed is. And we had that discussion last night. Right now, it's only 50% capacity. Do you or don't you, you know, do you put it off again for another year? So, there's still be challenges in the next four or five months.
All right. Second thing I got is, were you familiar, we appointed Scott Whip to the to the watershed board. Are you familiar with Scott previously?
Yes. Yeah, him and I had talked over the course of the last few years. He actually, he applied once or twice before, so.
Yeah, yeah. He is very well-prepared for the interview. It's impressive.
Looked good.
I wanted to, I, you know, the bottom line is I wanted a farmer on that board for sure, a Stearns County farmer and you know, he certainly fit the bill. The, at some point, I would appreciate, maybe NACO has information on this or something, but at some point, all of these solar items that were approving, it's going to result down the line in disposal. And whether it's solar or whether it's the windmills or whatever. And I know out west, some of that stuff in other states has been around for quite a while. I'm wondering, maybe AMC can access those folks for us or whatever. I would like us to at least be aware of long run some of the challenges we're gonna have, because we're getting quite a few of these. And I'm of the opinion that while none of us might be here at that time, we are dumping or creating a problem of dumping on a, on a future board. And we should at least have some element of awareness that we're doing it. And then, let's see. And fourth item is I gotta have a discussion with Dr. Willie, but I'll wait on that, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Lee. Steve?
Yeah, well, Lee, just touching on your solar panel, wind turbine blades.
Yeah.
You know, that discussion in the utility areas ongoing, there actually is some research being done even on the blades, you know, if there's a way to grind them up and, and, you know, figure out another store. Kind of like, you know, fly ash from the coal industry is used in concrete, you know, as a byproduct, and they sell it and it's mixing with the concrete. You know, so it's stuff like this that they're, you know, right now, research is going, because there's, I think there might be one landfill in southern Minnesota or northern Iowa that's been taking blades. Otherwise, they're all out, like in Wilmington where it's less populated. There's a continual, they're researching ways to, you know, be able to recycle these blades. But the only other thing is maybe just a question, the administration and the board. Any thoughts on when you're thinking we might meet as a group again?
Well, I was, I was thinking about having that conversation with, with our chair sometime soon, see where we might want to head. Okay. We do have, we do have the, we do have the boardroom remodels that we can keep some social distance when we do want to begin to meet in person again.
Okay, because I know most of the neighboring counties are not meeting. But just curious if anybody really has an objection to us meeting?
Well, let we get some more information. I mean, I have to admit personally, one of the, some of you are, that might already have gotten your first shot. Some of you will be eligible soon. Some of us won't be. I think once we get, personally, once we get through vaccination, it might be a little bit easier. And I think there's some questions about variants coming out and contagiousness. And Ron looks pretty, I'm here by myself as Lee was before. It's very big for one person. If we, if you could figure the space, not at our dais, we might be able to do it. So, yeah, let's, let's, let's get some, let's get some recommendations from staff about that. I miss seeing you all. Joe, anything from you?
Yeah, and I'll just pick off, up where you guys just left off. I'm looking forward to getting through this as well. You know, hopefully the vaccine will continue to get out and get out there and we can move forward and get back into, into the chambers. And also, just with staff, you know, it's been tough on everybody, I think, trying to do their duties. And I appreciate everybody on the entire county doing the best they can, because, you know, the residents do have an expectation for us to get our job done. And it sounds like we're doing a pretty good job doing that. So, you know, keep your shoulder to the grindstone. I appreciate that. And then just with response to Lee, the questions about solar, yeah, I, I too, and you know, I've got questions about the taxation of that in fairness. Because it seems like they're, they're trying to skirt the production tax and the property tax as well, that they start putting them in in small pieces on a piece of property. I guess it would be similar if I go to the liquor store, buy a case of beer with a $20 bill, I have to pay tax. But if I use ones, I don't have to pay the tax. So, I'll pay with ones. That's all I got.
We always have such interesting conversations. It's almost too bad we can't have a beverage while we're doing. So, I just want to also just continue to thank staff. I think once, regardless of when we're meeting, or people are able to more freely go in and out of buildings safely. Our work is going to be different for a long time. And it's been good seeing AMC and NACO, what they're putting together. And I think we have a lot to be proud of in terms of outcomes. And I, I'm sure you all have heard from people too. I know we have a number of staff that are really appreciative and trying to do this as well as managing. Family members can be a little tough on a number of people, so kudos to them. And it'd be good, once we can see what we're able to do moving, moving forward. So, thank you. And I think that's it. So, unless there's anything else, this meeting is adjourned. And I think that's it. So unless there's anything else, um, this meeting is adjourned.